A call to order the Gladstone City Council work session for October 25th, 2022. It's 5:30 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires we make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide the opportunity for the general public to participate to the best of our ability. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be in person in our council chambers, as well as those citizens that wish to attend in person. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. The work session is a time for the council and staff to discuss matters openly and informally, and public comment is not part of our agenda and is not allowed. Attendees will not be able to speak during this work session. We will not have a consent agenda, business from the audience, nor business from the council. We have three items on our agenda this evening. Number one is proposed amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the GMC, Chapter 5.04 on Business Licenses. Two is proposed amendments to the Gladstone Municipal Code, again GMC, Chapter 9.60 Camping Prohibited in Certain Places, Chapter 10.16 Abandoned and Hazardous Vehicles, and Chapter 10.04 Parking Amendments. And lastly is the selection process for appointments to vacant boards, committees, and commission positions in 2023. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So item one, staff will present proposed amendments to GMC Chapter 5.04, Business Licenses for the council to consider prior to the 2023 Business License Renewal Process.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, City Council. So like the mayor said, this item is coming before you. In November, we're going to send out our annual Business License Renewal Letters. This past year, staff has spent quite amount of time dealing with three areas that you'll find in the staff report. We have our co-compliance officer here tonight and our office assistant, Sean Boyle and Haley Kratz. Haley and Tammy Bannock processed our business licenses, so we wanted to make them available to you in case you had any questions. The city attorney has also provided draft amendments to this, and I think probably Chad, what I will do is have you talk high level about the three sections of changes that we're proposing. And then we also want to introduce some comments that we received earlier today from an elected official and answer those on the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So just want to start off by talking about the Business License Ordinance generally. And historically, what the city has done is use the business licenses as a method for collecting information and for revenue. It wasn't really used as a regulatory sort of ordinance. What these amendments do on a high level is switch that around a little bit and add some regulatory framework to the business license, which allows the city then to have greater enforcement authority, another tool in the toolbox, so to speak, to use as an enforcement tool as necessary when people are violating, especially public health and safety laws. That's really what this ordinance is focused on. So the ordinance does three major things in light of that and trying to implement that. First, one of the things it does is it makes clear that short and long-term rental units are included within the business license requirements. The second is that it really focuses on adding some enforcement provisions. And then finally, there's just some general housekeeping provisions. The ordinance, as you go through it, you'll see in the redline version where the changes are made. It's not making a wholesale complete change to the ordinance, but rather updating it. They've added some definitional terms, made clear that there are both the requirement to have a business license as well as exceptions. As with the existing ordinance, in addition to the exceptions for some entities that will not have to get a business license, there's also a process for exemptions for people to still have to file information, but they don't have to pay the fee to receive a business license. So there's basically three different categories. First is those who are required to have a business license. The second, those being having an exemption. And the third, those who are just exempt completely from having to register or get a license. We still have the fees in place, short-term rental regulations. With the short-term rental regulations, this is just sort of an initial regulatory process. If the council's interested in doing greater regulations in the future, we can do so. And you can have the option to either include it within this ordinance, or put it in this chapter, or just add a new chapter in the future. But this is not intended to be a, it's not intended to be a complete regulatory framework for short-term rentals. It's just bringing them into the business license ordinance. And then finally, we have the enforcement provisions related to denial, replication, suspension, and other sorts of things that we can do to provide another tool in the toolbox for enforcement purposes. That's the general overview. You know, as City Administrator Betts mentioned, there are some issues that we emailed about earlier today. In addition, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you all have.
All right. Anything else from staff on this one?
Not at the current moment, no.
All right, questions. Counselor Garlington.
I had questions and I sent them to Administrator Betts.
Sorry about that. And maybe we could go over those really quick, and then I wouldn't duplicate because I forgot to write down. I didn't have a chance to like pull what I had asked into this. So that would be great. Okay. Okay.
So the first one is on page 1-5.
Jackie, your microphone. On page 1-5, under Section 2, it's a semantic at the end where it says included operating a rental unit. That should be changed to including. So staff will change that to including. And the second question is, should businesses be required to provide their federal ID number? Haley, do you want to provide the response for that one?
A federal ID number is something that is requested on the application itself. It is not something that we put in the municipal code. Part of the reasoning is, is some federal ID numbers are social security numbers, and we don't want to have the responsibility of keeping those safe. So if a business has a federal ID number, they can't put that on there, but it is not a requirement. There's tons of other ways that we can look up a business without using a FIN.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is page 1-7. Number 4A, a service offered by a person under the age of 16, such as lawn mowing, newspaper delivery, lemonade stand, and the like. Counselor Garlington asked, why the age of 16 can it be under the age of 18? Haley?
And that can happen. The reason why it is 16 is regulations for children working up to 16 are very minimized. There's a lot of rules that go into that from Bulleye. But if council wants to change it to 18, that is a change that we can do.
I think it would just be worth a conversation. And the reason that I say that is because I, as I had said earlier to Administrator Betts, when a youth turns 16 years old, all of a sudden now you have to say you can't mow a lawn because you've got that gap two years. And they're still in high school trying to earn money. So, well, you'd hope they would be. So I guess that's where I, I mean, I get the fact that you're saying that it kind of goes with what other jurisdictions maybe have put in there. But I don't know. It just, it just seems like we're cutting an age group off at the knees. And so anyway, onward hope. That was mine.
Is there a consensus to change it?
Back to the 16, aren't you required to 16 to get a work permit to work? Before 16, you don't need a work permit to work? So I'd imagine that's why they've picked the age of 16 because prior to that, kids go out and do whatever they want, pretty much. But if you want to have a job, you have to be, have a work permit. You can't get it until you're 16.
I don't think they're required anymore.
But that's probably where the age came from was the work permit.
Yeah.
So just to clarify, it's similar to that. While you're not required to have a work permit, you can't necessarily have an employee who's under 16, unless there's certain exceptions, like for a family business, for example. And so I think the intent of this 16 is that when people are over 16, it's a greater possibility that they are an employee of a business. And so therefore, a business license would be necessary. As opposed to when they're under 16, the likelihood is that they're not going to be an employee of a business. It's really just someone providing a service. I think that's the distinction. But as Haley said, you know, you guys are drafting this in whatever manner you want. So if you want to create an exception for 18, that's fine as well. It's just I think there's a greater risk that someone really should be having a license at that age, as opposed to someone who's under 16.
So let me ask you this. If you are, if you have a small business as a youth, and is there a certain amount of money you can make without having to do that? Without having to have a license, I guess would be the question?
Without having to have a business license within the city?
Yeah.
So as proposed, there's not a dollar threshold. If you're engaged in a business, then you have to have a business license.
Have to ponder this one.
Yeah. It seems to me that a kid who's out there mowing yards, you know, is not going to be subject because it specifically says that it's, there's no dollar amount. If they're out there doing some of these service-related jobs, that they're exempt and don't need a business license. But, you know, these days, there's youths, sometimes under 16, that are running full businesses.
Yeah.
And so, you know, they would still be subject to a business license because it's an actual business as opposed to one of these service-related jobs.
So maybe if we added the word "or" in between 16 and such, which?
You want to say service offered by a person under the age of 16 or such as lawn mowing?
Newspaper delivery, lemonade stand, and the like.
Can I pop in here? Because obviously I have a landscaping business. So, I mean, really, when it comes down to it, if there's 16-year-olds, you know, a legitimate business that is, you know, paying taxes. And also, you're not competing against the 16-year-old. You may be competing against the 18-year-old who suddenly has a business called Joe's Lawn Mowing, who is doing-
But this is under 16.
Right, right.
I was saying under 18.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I'm just sort of saying that you could definitely have somebody who is out there, not just mowing the neighbor's lawn for, you know, 25 bucks.
Right.
If they have a business as opposed to a service. You know, those are the two things that I would want to differentiate between. And if they're looking for jobs, we are hiring. So just wanted to put that up there.
Okay.
Okay, was that it?
So do you want to propose no changes at this time to that language? Or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, there wasn't a huge amount of discussion. I was just thinking out loud and on that age thing.
So we'll just do a consensus to leave it as is or change it? Counselor Todd?
I'm fine with 18. I really am.
Under 18.
Under 18, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Ripley, under 18 or as written?
You know, to me, I don't think it really matters. I mean, if a kid's going to go out there and do something, you'd hope they'd be out active. You don't want to discourage anybody from doing anything either. But either way, I don't, I think if they're going to follow the rules, they're not going to follow the rules. So I don't, I don't know if there's that big of an age
Okay.
that matters to me that much.
All right, so we have an under 18 and a I don't care. So are you go okay with the under 18? Okay. Counselor Alexander. Counselor Hartman.
I'm fine with leaving it as is and staying in line with whatever Bulleye is saying, so.
All right, and I'm okay with the under 18. So we'll just go ahead and change that to under, and you want to go under 18?
I, what, so what Counselor Hartman said, that language comes from where?
So it's more, it's more just Bulleye has regulations for minors within the state of Oregon. And the regulations for, if you are under 16, are greater than when you hit 16. Those regulations pretty much go out the window. There, there's not, like, if you're under 16, you have a certain amount of time that you can work a day, depending on if it's a, or a week, if it's a school week or not. Once you hit 16, you can work up to 44 hours a week. So that, I think that's one of the reasons that it was there is because-
Okay.
Bureau Oregon Labor Industries is what Bulleye stands for.
Then I didn't understand what you had said the first time. My apologies. So I'd like to backpedal on that just a little bit, just given the fact that there's a standard above us, I guess, so to speak. Sorry about that, you guys. I didn't mean to make a mountain out of a molehill.
Okay, so now we want to leave it as written?
Yeah, I think that if, like I said, if there's regulation above us-
But it doesn't tie our hands to changing this to under 18. They're just saying that there's more limitations on kids under 16 work-wise than over 16.
Oh, if it doesn't, then if it doesn't make a difference between what we decide and where they're at, then yeah, let's do the under 18.
Okay, under 18 then.
Can I make one more suggestion for that language? Perhaps we could clarify that it's offered by the person as an individual and not with other employees or anything like that?
I would love that because that really is the stuff that infringes on legitimate businesses that are, you know.
Yeah. Oh, I'm all about that.
If it's just, I'm going to go to my neighbor's, I'll mow your lawn, then that's, that's great. I think we, well, we didn't all do that. I've never mowed a lawn. But I'm saying, I hear that that happens. That's fine. That's different than promoting a business that could then, you know, harm another legitimate business.
And what was, what was, or you're going to do-
You're going to wordsmith it?
Okay.
Yeah.
And put it in the right place?
Yeah, so basically it'll read something along the lines of, "A service offered by a person under the age of 18 as an individual without employees, such as lawn mowing, newspaper, delivery, lemonade, and the like."
Okay. Was that the last one I had?
Nope, we have one more.
Okay.
Page 1-8. Under item 3, you had asked, should it say no later than the first business day of the calendar year instead of just the first day of the calendar year? And Haley's response was?
So the reason why it says the first day of the calendar year is business licenses expire on the last day of the calendar year.
Perfect.
So it's, that's just when it's expired by.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff comments? Do you want us to go through the city attorney's questions for staff?
Hey Chad?
So as I mentioned before, there is a difference between entities that are required to get a business license, entities that are required to have an exemption certification, and entities that are just excused from the ordinance at all. They don't have to comply at all. And so the language that is being used for the exemptions in 5.04040 on page, I think it's 1-8.
I think that's 030.
Is it 030? Yeah. License required, yeah, I'm sorry, 030 on 1-6. Specifically, subsection 2C says, "Any occupation, any business or occupation specifically exempt from the payment of regulatory business license fees under state or federal law, for example, a non-for-profit." And so there are, as you'll see in later on, where we're specifically just exempting certain entities, there are some preemptions in state and federal law where we cannot require certain professions to get a business license. For example, realtors are one that have a preemption in state law that says we can't force them to have a business license because they're regulated by state law, especially when we're having a regulatory license as opposed to a non-regulatory license like we're doing with this ordinance. And so this language really, from my perspective, should be moved to the exemption and just saying anytime we're preempted, we're not going to require it. Whereas what staff was intending with this language was to say nonprofits, they're not required to have a license, but they are required to get the exemption certificate. So we have the information about them. So what I would propose doing is changing 2C, just to clarify that nonprofits need to get an exemption. And then for the language that exists in 2C now, moving that to the exemption, or to the exclusions in page 1-7 in 5.04040, for what I think it is. I'm just clarifying, as you see in F and G on there, there's the licensed real estate salespeople and the licensed insurers that were preempted. So just sort of encapsulating those for all preemptions are exempt from having to comply at all. And then the nonprofits need to have the exemption certificate.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Counselor Todd, questions, concerns?
I have a question. And we've sort of talked about this over the last four years. In 2016, I'm pretty sure the business license went from $25 a year to well over 100, and then based on how many employees you have. And I know that we do now have on our website some way to look up the licensed businesses. But do you have to know what business you're looking up or what part of town? Do we have a way to do it so that, hey, you're paying a little bit of money to do this? Could we have like a directory of services of this is plumbing, this is that, these are licensed people in town? And I just sort of always thought that that would be helpful. Can you tell me about the map? Because I've asked you about it before.
Yeah, so the map, you would have to know kind of what you are looking for.
Or who you're looking for, right?
Looking for, where they're located. It just gives you an idea of these people have a business license within the city of Gladstone, and here's where they're located.
So like if you go, does my neighbor have one? And you could go and sort of pull up the map and zoom in and you can do-
Yes, the only ones it doesn't show is rental properties.
Okay. It shows the short-term rental, so.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, I think it does. But there's not a way to type in the name of a business and say, do they have a valid license in our town?
I'd have to look more into that to see for sure. I can't remember if there is a search on there for individuals looking at it. I know on the backend I can. But I'll have to look at that.
I just was, you know, if you're going, hey, I want to use a plumber, most plumbers are going to be licensed. But you know what I mean? Just sort of something that you're going, is this, I want to, I want to work within my business, in my town. I want it to be a business that is licensed and doing all the things that you're supposed to do. And I just was wondering if there'd be a way to add that in. And it's also then a benefit for, you know, you're paying quite a bit for your license. And then you sort of can be like, yeah, I'm one of the, I'm one of the licensed landscaper, landscape maintenance in town, you know what I mean, instead of another one. Is that a problem?
So you're asking about a specific software issue on our website
Right.
that helps identify who has business licenses in town, but nothing that needs to be-
No, but I just, I, this might be my last shot at it. And I, I know I brought it up a couple times over the four years. And I just think, you know, we're, we're doing this stuff right now. And it's, it's, it's an expense. It's not horrible, for sure. I mean, it's right in line with every other city. But I know Oregon City does have a search engine for that because when I was there, they, they had it.
I like that idea, too.
Yeah, currently, the city does not have that option available. I'm looking at it right now.
So we can look into what costs are for the software to do that kind of work?
Something that could be done, then that would be lovely.
All right, Counselor Ripley.
I'm good.
Counselor Alexander. Counselor Hartman.
I'm good, thanks.
And I don't have any questions.
I would like to just talk about one high-level regulatory change that we're making that I think as you're adopting policy, you need to be aware of. And I'm going to have Chief Schmiver talk a little bit about some issues that we've been dealing with this past year with rental property. When we get complaints from neighbors that there's too many cars parking there, there's too many tenants, why can't the city revoke their license? And so, Chief, do you want to speak a little bit to what this language assists the city? And I believe it's on 1-11 and 1-12 with chronic nuisance?
Yeah, so after reviewing, after reviewing the business license and Caden Fuss and Borak can jump in anytime he wants, this gives us a little bit more leverage on what we can do with business license and revoking them and bringing that forth. And there's also a due process in that. As you may or may not know, chronic nuisance is very difficult to get to. However, we can get to it, and we have gotten to it at some point or at least close. But with regards to revoking a business license and preventing people from the short term, like the too many cars part, which isn't necessarily part of a chronic nuisance, because there has to be criminal elements to that. But it does go towards nuisance. And it allows us, when we, when we look at things, you can get a report of how many violations were at that house, or how many citations were issued at that house as a result of that. So although, although it's very helpful and it gets us there, we are able to revoke if, if we do get to the level of a chronic nuisance, we're able to bring that to you and revoke, and then they can appeal to the council. So that gives us a little bit more tools in our toolbox to deal with, deal with problem houses.
Yes.
So that's, and that's the message I wanted to get across, and I think Jackie did, too.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions for the chief? Counselor Todd?
So it has to, if to be a nuisance, it has to be criminal and-
Yeah, they're not necessarily all criminal, but there has to be significant violations that are called out in the code. So I don't want, I don't want to, but there's a lot of criminal nexus to it as I, as I remember the code. But there are other code violations, nuisance stuff that can be applied to.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Ripley?
So there's, there's one house that I walk the dogs past all the time. There's usually four to five cars parked in the grass, which to me, really don't care. But this time of year, once they start tracking mud into the street and everything else, does that change things for you guys?
So there is restriction on parking in the front yard. It's only the front yard, so that's from the front building face forward to where the curb or sidewalk would be.
This is a corner yard.
And, and so if it's in the side yard, it wouldn't be applicable. And a corner property gets to choose which is their front yard, which is their back or side yard. And so, but there's currently an exception in the code that if they simply just lay down some gravel, it's no longer a violation. So if there is dirt being tracked into the street, there is possible that illicit discharge might apply. And so if there's some concern about that, if it's reported, Public Works and myself will go out and we'll take a look at it and address that if that's something that is of concern.
Anything else?
I have a few more things. Okay, on page 1, 1-7, is a newspaper delivery different than a newspaper carrier? In A and C?
I believe it's more A is just under 16 and C is, doesn't matter the age.
Okay. There was in, on page 1-12, number 5, I was wondering if a person whose application for a business license had been denied or revoked?
Fines.
Fines was my question. Do they have to bring their fines up to
To current?
To current in order to get that business license back? And is that clear somewhere so that if that is required, that there's not a question that it was already in writing?
And I apologize, Counselor Garlington, you'd brought that-
That's okay.
-as one of my questions. But the question was, should we have any language in there that says that they have to pay all past due fines and be current as well?
I think that would-
That makes sense to me.
I mean, and if we don't, that would be fine. I just like people to have, you know, have the expectation that you know what has to be done.
That makes sense, and I actually thought that that language was, okay.
Look at page 1-10, 5.040603, "Be as employed, the business to be licensed or any person associated with the business does not owe the city any monies, including but not limited to unpaid utility bills, fines, et cetera."
So three B covers that intent.
So when they come back to apply for the new license after ninety days, these are the procedures of granting a license. And in order to get a license, you have to be fully paid up in any money to owe the city.
And it does state that um, you receive a penalty after X amount of time of your license.
Okay, I just hadn't seen that back there. So that's, yeah. I guess that's it.
All right, so Steph, you just want a consensus from us?
Yes, so procedurally, if we can incorporate the amendments to this language at your November eighth city council meeting, we will bring an ordinance to you to consider. If it is approved that night and both readings can be done, then it'll go into effect in thirty days, which then we can send out our renewal letters in December notifying them of the proposed changes. So that would be the next step is we would prepare this for the November eighth city council meeting.
So when is our next newsletter going out?
It's at the printers.
It is.
Yeah.
We're not going to have enough time to put something in there to let people know that we're talking about business licenses, because this is going to affect a lot of people.
I have been working on um, uh, a list of businesses to mail out notices to, if, if that's how we want to proceed.
Perfect, all right. Um, so we just need a consensus to um, say yes, move forward with this with the changes that we've discussed? Or no, we need to bring it back and talk about it some more. Counselor Garlington.
Uh, I, yeah, let's move forward and obviously make sure that all businesses are notified that we're talking about them.
Counselor Todd.
Uh, just was wondering, when do they go out, the licenses renewals? Is that normally like December? I thought it was November.
Mid-November.
Okay.
Try.
Okay. Um, no, I'm fine, thank you.
All right, Counselor Ripley.
I'm good.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Hartman.
Yes.
And I'm fine too. So go ahead and move forward with that.
Thank you, and Haley and Sean, you can be excused. Thank you for coming tonight.
Um, next is item number two, City Administrator Betts, Police Chief Schmerber and City Attorney Jacobs will propose amendments to current Gladstone code within the authority outlined in the League of Oregon Cities, referred to as LOC, Guide to Persons Experiencing Homelessness in Public Spaces. Steph.
Chad, do you want to do a, a summary?
Sure. So our office has been working with the chief and looking at various issues related to uh, individuals who are experiencing homelessness and their experience within the city of Gladstone. Um, as you may recall, there was a court case several years ago uh, uh, out of the city of Boise um, that created a constitutional right for individuals who are experiencing homelessness to sleep outdoors on public properties if shelter beds are not otherwise available to them. What the court said, however, is that you are still allowed to have time, place and manner restrictions on how individuals who are experiencing homelessness are going to engage in that basic human function of sleeping. Um, since then, the legislature passed a bill, House Bill thirty-one fifteen, which codified these rights um, and requires every city's ordinances related to camping to be reasonable under, under a totality of the circumstances test. And the city of Gladstone um, already amended its camping ordinance to come into compliance with the Boise decision. And since then, um, because this is an area of law that's continuing to change, there was another Ninth Circuit decision uh, related to the city of Grants Pass that just came out a few weeks ago. It's continuing to evolve and likewise, we're continuing to have different experiences with individuals experiencing homelessness, whether it's within the city of Gladstone, in the region or statewide. Um, there's a lot of communication between cities about how to deal with these issues and it's just a, it's a, it's basically in flux, to put it bluntly, and a lot of this is changing. So these amendments are being brought to you in the spirit of things being in flux and trying to address some situations that the police department have dealt with over the last uh, six months or so. And specifically dealing with car camping and individuals who are sleeping in their cars. And trying again, and in this, the theme of more tools in the toolbox, trying to give the police department a few more tools to deal with these situations, because as drafted, our court, our current ordinance wasn't really intended to get at these kinds of activities. So um, what's being proposed are three separate amendments to provide some more tools. Um, and I don't know if, if Chief, I believe you are actually proposing that each of these be adopted or they're just for discussion.
I propose them be adopted, but obviously it's open for discussion for everybody.
So the, the first one, um, the city has something called a hazardous vehicle ordinance, where we basically have the ability to tow individuals without notice. Generally speaking, when we're going to tow a vehicle, we give them notice in advance to be able to allow them to move their vehicles. And in this situation, um, we're looking at basically chronic violators and, and people who are continuing to um, violate the parking ordinances through camping. And we want to be able to tow their vehicles and not having to give them n- notice after notice after notice. So the idea basically is that if they have uh, five tickets within a thirty day time period, um, and they haven't appealed any of those tickets, that uh, after the fifth time, we would be able to tow them without giving them subsequent notice. We would be giving them notice in each of the other tickets, saying that, you know, if you reach five, that you can be towed without further notice. So it's not like they're not getting any notice, but the idea would just be if someone continues to pile up ticket after ticket after ticket, that we would have a tool to basically move that car off the street, so it doesn't continue to be a place for individuals to camp. The second proposal um, would be to implement a shorter twenty-four hour parking limit for vehicles parked in commercial zones within the city. Currently, uh, individuals are prohibited from parking or storing vehicles longer than seventy-two hours on any public street in any zone. And by shortening it to twenty-four hour period within the commercial zones, it would give us the ability to have greater enforcement, so people aren't just camping out in the commercial zones for a longer period of time. And then lastly, the, there's a proposal to amend the city code um, to include public rights of way within the definitions of city property, such that camping would be prohibited on all city property, including public rights of way between the hours of six thirty AM and nine thirty PM. As I was just mentioning, the city did amend its camping ordinances previously to come into compliance with the Boise decision. And part of those code amendments prohibit camping on city property between the hours of six thirty AM and nine thirty PM, basically to allow people to camp overnight, but not during the day. And, but we did not include rights of way within those restrictions of where the public area of where camping is prohibited. So this amendment would basically just bring public rights of way, which is the streets, into that, so people can't camp in their cars during the day. They could still do so at night, but they're just not during the day. So those are the three proposals. Happy to turn it over to the chief to sort of talk about why he thinks those would be helpful.
Thanks, Chad. Um, one of the issues we faced, and I think we're all familiar with, was the issue that was downtown with a vehicle. Uh, someone living in their vehicle and, and at times sleeping in their vehicle. Only we couldn't catch them sleeping in the vehicle. They were up all hours of the night and moving around. And there was very, we're limited on what we can do. Our, our codes didn't apply. Um, and it was frustrating. It was frustrating for the businesses. It was frustrating for the community members. Um, we had community members drive by and pointing us, do something about this right now. And it's like, I wish I could. Um, but you know, one of the things I, I, I want to say is I, although I think this is going to help us, I don't, I don't believe there is that, that magic solution for homelessness. I'm not considering and say that there is. It's not going to solve all our problems, but it's really going to reduce the fact of what we have to deal with and give us a little bit more tools in our toolbox to deal with individuals experiencing homelessness in our, in our, especially in our downtown area. So one of the changes in there is, is instead of, you know, you have to move your vehicle two hundred feet, now it's six hundred feet or three blocks. And so it gets them out of, out of the area where we need to. Current code prevents people from camping in our residential neighborhoods already. So that, that, that works for us, right? What we're really talking about is a commercial and downtown area. Secondly, I, I, I want to emphasize that even when we're dealing with the individual that was downtown, um, our focus was not just the enforcement piece, because we literally issued citations, had arrested, um, had towed that vehicle multiple times and it still kept coming back. It was like Groundhog Day. But because of our two-pronged approach, we still worked with the wraparound services of Clackamas County Housing and everything else, and we're able to get her housing. And as a result of her compliance, finally of doing that, um, we worked with municipal court to help her get out from underneath a bunch of stuff, so that she's in housing now and uh, has a place to stay and, and vouchers. So I, I don't want to lose sight that it's just not our enforcement piece. We're also going to continue doing, we know, work on our philosophy was making sure we provide services at the same time. So that would, that's kind of a dual, a dual policy for us, so. Um, but this, this specifically does give us more tools to deal with. And it's twenty-four hour parking downtown in the commercial area or any of our commercial areas. So you can't park a vehicle longer than twenty-four hours down there.
All right, Counselor Garlington, questions?
I just, I'm just to have the conversation, when you talk about hazardous vehicles, includes a vehicle parked illegally. What in, what, what is a hazardous vehicle to you?
So when I, when I look at, when I look at a vehicle, so if something's leaking from the vehicle, if there's, there's rubbish or garbage hanging out all over it. Um, and that's causing, that's causing a stench or another public nuisance of some sort, but also the parking violation. So if it's parked there illegally, that's, I, I read, I read that to be part of that.
Okay, and then I'm, I'm assuming that, I shouldn't assume, never assume, my apologies. That desert does not include a car that is i- in, that is actually running, that they could start it and move it. If it is not able to start the car and move it, then wh- what happens there? You just?
Well, then, 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 you know, we can apply two things. We can apply this ordinance to it or the seventy-two hour abandoned vehicle ordinance. But the key issue is if it's abandoned, the person has to be away from it. So it, it might take five days and i- it's like this individual was never away from her vehicle. So we really couldn't look on, look at their abandoned ordinance to deal with that um, as much as everybody wanted us to.
Yeah.
So.
No, I, I, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, and this individual paid the citations.
Yes.
Every time we issued them. And that's different than if you get a bunch of citations, they're not paying. We have laws that can regulate that, but this issue, it was an anomaly.
It, it, it really was. This individual really didn't want to be housed. They liked doing what they're doing and they had the financial means to survive. And that was the frustrating part about it. And it was almost like I had to be convinced.
And like you said, and help.
And help. And in, in, in most cases, yes, in, in most cases, they comply. In this case, it was an anomaly. And, and you know, I, if it happened once, I'm sure it's going to happen again at some point.
Hi, I have a question. I know one thing I saw Sarah do.
Here.
Oh.
Mike.
One thing I saw her do.
Don't use names.
Oh, okay, well, um, well, because I met her and talked to her, so I thought I knew her, you know? That's right. Um, but um, she parked in a handicap. I don't see anything in here that covers, I mean, if you have a handicap placard and you're in a handicap spot, can you stay longer? Can you not stay longer?
No, I, I, I believe it's, the, the rules would still apply. The, the, the handicap placard allows you to park in that spot. But that spot is now regulated. The whole streets would be regulated. And please correct me if I'm speaking out of, out of turn for corrections. You're the one with the gun. I'm not going to correct you.
Well, the, the other issue that we uh, came up, I guess, is this was before a community festival when we had a parade route secured. Yes, we did. Streets were going to be closed, but we didn't have the authority to move the vehicle. And so that's why now we're trying to think through what would help us in the future if we're in this type of situation again.
Right.
Politically, we want to provide the services to individual needs for a better lifestyle. But this really was something that every day kept changing. And we just didn't have the ability to enforce the way that we should.
Well, and she didn't want the resources. She didn't want the help for a long period of time.
That, and that's correct. That's correct. And, and we put a lot of, understand, we put a lot of manpower, it's a lot of, a lot of resources to this, uh, to address this issue.
Yeah.
And, and working through our current ordinances and, and anything we can do to leverage movement and and it worked. I mean, eventually it worked, but not at the pace that maybe everybody would have liked.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, I only, when you talk about including public right of way, that, and that includes a car?
Yes.
Public right of way?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, under our, under our, under our camping ordinance, a car is defined in that ordinance.
Okay, okay.
Is that it?
That's it for me.
Counselor Todd.
Um, uh, I don't know if you recall, I definitely recall, uh, la- almost a year ago, this time, um, the same individual had three cars.
Yes, I remember.
And.
Oh.
Uh, backed their vehicle into my driveway.
I remember.
And parked there and left.
I remember.
So that would be abandoned, then now under this, right?
Yes, so, and, and, and actually, because it's on private property, it could be towed.
I, I was, that's, I was out of the country at the time, so I was watching it on my, yeah, on my ring and I was like.
So it actually could be towed because it's on private.
Okay, didn't have to have the towing, because my landlord was having a hard time though with that, because there was nobody who wanted to tow it.
Yes.
Because.
And that's another, and that's another element we face. Um, either whether it's vehicles or whether it's RVs, um, a lot of tow companies don't want to store.
Yeah.
You know, we work, we work with a tow company right now that, that as, as we, as mentioned in the ordinance, where if we did tow a vehicle and it did have belongings in it, it would allow, we would get that individual into the tow lot and the tow lot would allow that individual to have access to their stuff and, and remove it, so.
But you, you do have to find a tow company that.
Yes, and we work, we got a good one right now that we're working with, so.
So if that were to ever happen again, someone backs in, parks their car, that's not allowed. People can't just park in your driveway.
People, people could just can't block, park in your driveway.
Thank you.
And leave their car.
Thank you.
Good to know. Counselor Ripley.
I think my only question is these, these cars and RVs, can they be towed if they don't have insurance?
If they're operable. I mean, if they're on the road.
So if somebody tries to camp on Portland Avenue and you run, you run in and they don't have car insurance.
No, we got, we have to catch it. We have to catch it moving for that.
So you can't have a parked car with no insurance on it?
You can have a parked car.
I thought you couldn't even have it.
It has to be licensed and registered.
If it's licensed and registered, you don't have to have insurance.
You don't have to insurance.
Got you.
All right, Counselor Alexander.
Well, I have almost, what, so if, if the car's there and you're approaching them for a different, uh, say, uh, they're breaking some other law, but then you don't run their license plate and see if their tags are good or their, and their license is good or anything, even though they're in the vehicle, they can get out and leave the vehicle and it doesn't get you towed?
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I, I, I kind of do, but there's, there's certain, there's all, all kinds of circumstances. I mean, we typically, you know, procedure is if you're going to go out with a car, go out with somebody in a car, you give the car description, the license plate information, and dispatch will always get back to you with owners and such. So it depends on, it's situational. I can't, I can't.
Okay.
I'd have to be in front of it, so.
All right.
And, and just so you know, there are legal limitations on your ability to tow a vehicle if it's not otherwise blocking traffic or creating a public safety concern.
That's correct.
Too many rules. Counselor Hartman.
Uh, a question about um, on two dash four, letter D. Um, it does talk about snow removal and it's more just a curious about it, like snow removal equipment. If we started like, like we have street sweeping, does that not fall under that? Or if we, we do street sweeping on Portland Avenue, like that wouldn't fall under a means to move it?
Just go around it.
I know, but this is a saying that we can't, you know, if we had snow removal equipment, then we would have a reason to be able, a reasonable reason to move the vehicle. I'm just wondering, maybe we can add street sweeping to that also, and there's another reason why we can move the car.
Toolbox.
So.
I don't know if that.
That's what I'm thinking.
I don't know.
So.
We don't have that. I mean, we, I mean, never mind. I'm not even going to jinx the snow thing, never mind.
As I was, there's a lot of constitutional issues related to towing of vehicles, especially without notice. And so with the hazardous vehicles, what we're trying to do is create situations where there is a strong enough public safety concern, but it's legitimizes the government's need to tow a vehicle without notice to the owner. And so with street sweeping, I'm not sure that our interest in getting the street cleans, although it is a very valid interest, rises to the level that where we could tow someone without giving them adequate notice. So I think.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Just trying to add to your toolbox.
I, I kind of liked it. You don't have the gun, so I can say.
Yeah. Um. Say something, never mind. Um, for, and it's just again, another comment, like you had mentioned mobile homes or RVs in like throughout here. Is it assumed that when we say vehicle, we are assuming anything that? Is it assumed that when we say vehicle, we are assuming anything that moves with wheels, including mobile homes and RVs?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the only other thing I was going to say is, you know, when we bring this back, um, whichever meeting we do, that just, I think it's really good for people to understand that you all went through many, many steps and like what those steps were of like restorative justice, and that you guys really did so much time um for people to understand that. You know, so like being like really clear to the public that here's all the things that we did, we vouchers, and we created this relationship. Um, I think it just would be super important for the public to know how much work you all put into getting her housing and, um, you know, fixing that solution, because it wasn't just a like, oh, I'm going to ticket you five times, and then we put you, you know. It was really a relationship building, which is really, was really awesome to see, and it was painful. But it was really great to see um that she finally got housing, so um I just want to commend you for that.
Sure, Counsel Garlington.
On um C, and I didn't realize, see this until Council, uh, Counsel Hartman had brought up this, the snow removal, where it says needed by the fire department or the police department. We don't want to add in their public works. What if there was a?
Might be another good tool. Tool.
I'm going to leave this one to.
I, and I only say that, I mean, what if somebody had a water leak and they needed to move that car? And that person was at work all day?
I think fire departments usually are there first. Isn't that true? If there's a water leak, they're the first call? And if the car's in the way, they'll just run it over.
Oh, that's good to know.
At least that's what I'm told, even though I've never seen that happen, but I get threatened with it all the time.
I have seen pictures of hoses running through windows of cars.
So it does happen.
Yeah.
All right.
So for C on uh two dash four, uh, we can certainly look at that. I think for um for public works, we'd want to have some qualifying language about an actual emergency as opposed to just, you know, street sweeping. That's another example, so.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's why it's police and fires, because it's emergency related.
Has to be safety and health related.
Yeah.
To the public.
Yeah.
Our.
Sewers leaking all over this. I think that's pretty much safety.
Yeah, and so that's what I'm saying. We could add that with some qualifying language um to clarify that it is a a health and safety emergency that public works needs to address, not just sort of everyday run-of-the-mill maintenance or something like that.
Okay, I just.
Go bad real quick.
Think, you know, thinking out loud.
All right, any other questions?
Is that something you all want us to draft and bring back?
I, Chief Schmerber, what are you thinking?
I like it the way it is.
Okay.
Um, because if there's, if, if there is an emergency and we have to get in there, we're, police and fire probably are going to be there.
Okay.
And so if there's something we need to move the, the vehicle for, then we'll go ahead and move it, no different than if we tow a car on a parade route around the corner.
Good to know. All right.
Real fast, so that would be like, I mean, police or fire would be the ones that would be taking care of if there was a gas leak or if there was, you know, natural gas leak, that kind of thing too. It wouldn't have to be the utility, yeah.
Even a water main.
Yeah, so we're talking closing roads, blocking traffic, et cetera.
Okay.
And so it, it would truly be an emergency, and that would use our judgment on what we have to do.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Any other questions? Nope. Um, do you need a consensus from us then to go ahead and move this forward?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, Counsel Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counsel Ripley.
Yes.
Counsel Alexander.
Yes.
Counsel Hartman.
Yes.
Mayor, yes. So go ahead and move this one forward. And the last one is item three, staff will seek guidance from counsel on the selection process for the vacant positions on city boards, committees, and commissions in twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is coming up very fast. As staff was looking through our city boards, committees, and commissions vacancies, we have nine vacancies, and normally we would start advertising in November, and then in December come to the city council and you would make the appointments. What's different this time is that we have an election coming up, and you will have a new city council in January. From our perspective, we think the best approach would be to go ahead and advertise for the vacant positions in November and December with a December twelfth deadline. At that time, you're going to know who the new city council is going to be. We would print application packets for all of them to look over the two-week holidays, and we would put this on the January tenth city council meeting to make those appointments. Additionally, if you recall at your May meeting, you gave staff guidance to create an ad hoc committee to look at the city council rules for conformity to the new Gladstone city charter. And we also have a twenty-thirteen guidebook that we need to decide whether to repeal that resolution or to update it. So we would like to go ahead and start the recruitment for that ad hoc committee. It will be after the November eighth election, so people that aren't elected to city council may want to participate in one of your vacant committee boards or commissions or the ad hoc committee. So really, I just wanted to bring this to your attention tonight, that if you generally agree with, yes, it's better to wait until the new council appoints the members to twenty-twenty-three boards, committees, and commissions, then staff will go ahead and start the recruitment process. If a majority of you say no, we want to appoint them in December, I need to have that guidance tonight.
All right, Counsel Garlington.
Um, I'm all about doing it in January. Although I would go with whatever everyone else thought was a good idea, I'm not holding to that. I just think at this point, it gives us just a little bit more time. Um, but I would also like to add that the ad hoc committee that would look over the Gladstone city council guidebook, maybe want to, on the backside of that, take care of some of our ordinances that need to be updated. Uh, maybe it could be a committee that is willing to work for one year on different paperworks that were handed them and um and look into some of them, because there's a, there's quite a few with either grammatical errors or charter amendment errors, not errors, uh, things that don't match our charter now at this time that could possibly just be some housekeeping things that I think that maybe some citizens might want to get, you know, into the weeds and do something like that. It might not, you know, might be right up somebody's alley, so.
Is that something that can be added to the strategic plan?
Uh, the city council retreat in January, we're starting two, two years of goals that can be added. I still think that we can go ahead and advertise for an ad hoc committee, and instead of it maybe being a six-month committee, we can look at if they're interested adding additional duties to, to them. But we could add that in January, that last piece, if we wanted to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's it.
Counsel Todd.
Um, how many people were you running on the ad hoc committee? Did we discuss?
We did not discuss a number because quite frankly, I think we should encourage any and all that we get. And if you get twenty or thirty, that's great, then I would suggest narrowing it down to seven. But I didn't want to limit that um because I would rather encourage more people to apply.
That's a great idea. Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with moving it till January, but if anybody else wants to do something else.
Counsel Ripley.
I think January sounds good.
Counsel Alexander.
Yeah, whatever's easiest for Steph. What's easiest for you guys? Jackie?
Uh, January.
We could do either. I think really fundamentally is you're making appointments for boards that are going to, you know, set policy recommendations to the new council. It makes sense for the new council to appoint those members to their commissions.
In January.
Yeah. Counsel Hartman.
Just a question of clarification, um, where the idea came from. Like, we've had many seats open before in an election year. So why this year? Did the idea come forward? I'm just curious.
Well, every two years typically is where you have the most seats come available. This year, there is more seats.
Yeah.
And it potentially, depending on the outcome, could have a whole new makeup of the city council. But we also have to advertise this in the upcoming newsletter. But generally, every two years, like I would suggest in twenty-twenty-four, that that current council can make the appointments in December.
Yeah.
This is just because it's going to be a completely new council, potentially.
Fair enough. I'm fine with whatever.
Okay, and I'm fine with it too.
So great.
All right, that's all that we have on our agenda. Um, next meeting's coming up November eighth. A regular city council meeting at six-thirty here in person. November twenty-second is our city council work session, five-thirty here in person. December thirteenth is our regular city council meeting, six-thirty here in person. And December twenty-seventh is a holiday week, so we will not be having a meeting. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Counsel Hartman, seconded by Counsel Alexander. Any discussion? Could you draw a call vote, please?
Counsel Garlington.
Yes.
Counsel Todd.
Yes.
Counsel Hartman.
I.
Counsel Alexander.
Yes.
Counsel Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, meeting's adjourned at six-thirty PM.